Yeah.
The board's starting to order. We will start with. Board members roll call. Quinn Gork.
Here.
Jenna Robinson. What's that?
Yep.
I agree.
Here.
Grace Lehman.
I'm here.
And I like the customer visits here. We will start with our board call.
Yeah, so I brought back. The board goal tonight around enrollment and there was two goals, but I've only brought one back. Cause I thought we'd concentrate our discussion on that one and that is by the end of school year, your enrollment remains at current or number, current numbers or increases. And within the package, you have the goal itself. Which describes four strategies. On the Latin side, which. I'll talk a little bit about all of them, but I also include the homeschool notes, but I also just so you know, took out all the parents' names. Out of it and also. Those homeschool notes are what I think what board members created, right? And then there's just a short slideshow of an online school. But. I look at the first. The board goal around enrollment and the first one is outreach to home and charter schools. And I was like very impressed with the board did in the month of August and through September. So I thought as a board and then we have the homeschool notes with that. I thought we had a discussion around there like, so we did that and I think. It brought us perspective on where people are and we actually know where people are now. And so like one of the next steps as for that, what's, what's the next step of that group? To engage them and to be honest, I'm sort of chomping at the bit to talk to them, but I don't know if they want to talk to me, so. That's sort of what I'm thinking. So I would start with that discussion. So any thoughts on that?
I mean, I know the parents that I talked to that were willing to talk to you, if any, their needs and interests. And they seemed completely willing to come into the trap. I don't know, Jenna was saying maybe some of the groups might be a little resistant.
Yeah, they were meeting as boards. In early, early, middle September, and I never heard after that, which is fine. Are you, when you say meet like. Did you call them and have a conversation with them or?
Well.
All organized manner in which I call and I can have five or six people.
I think when we talked about it in the goal, you were saying. You'd like to get a group together to, you know, meet as a group and then everybody can kind of hash it out together. And so that's how I presented it to them when I asked. Like, you know, you'd be calling in several parents and homeschool parents or whatever and have a group meetings.
And I could, I can do, I.
And or call, I mean.
Yeah, and but I'll also Jenna should be here in a minute, but check with her to see, cause there's a large, couple of large groups that meant us words that I would like, and it doesn't have to be. Like one meeting, I mean, I have two separate, two separate ones, but I want to take the next step. So. Anything else on your other thoughts?
Since I talked to you, it seems to me open the door to you, so.
I will coordinate those so that they happen hopefully at least scheduled as not happen prior to the November board meeting. So the next. Those are the, if we go to slide. I don't know how it's numbered there, but it's, it's the PowerPoint presentation. So I wanted to touch on our online school. Astoria Trace Academy and so go to the next slide. So currently we have 22 students in our online academy. And those are the grade levels of those kids at the end. So we have some obviously grades one and two and five does not have any kids in them and that's just sort of the way it is. We're going to put Lynn on the spot here, those kids at nine, 10, 11 and 12, are they? Do they go to grade school, Lynn?
Those numbers do not match the enrollment of those that we have at grade school. And best we are only using those that are whole enrollment and not higher.
Correct.
Then we have the branch.
And they don't not come there strictly online?
They do come to the campus and engage in whatever they're. There are about two or three of them that have been exempted from that requirement, that they have demonstrated a history of success. Now again, they're vulnerable.
I do have, it's a, it's a big deal, but I do have a meeting tomorrow with a parent to try to enroll their kid into. This may live way far away from us and in the county sort of, but it's going to, it's worked out better for them to do this. So we go to the next slide. Just general information, we utilize a program at Mentum. And we utilize that Mentum during the pandemic and continue to use it, although. Could be a little different than the pandemic, but we use it at Mentum. The current staffing includes four online schools, a point five certified. Teacher that dedicated his grades K through eight. And then we have a 1.0 certified FTE support grades nine to 12, however, this person. Also provides instruction and support for students attending grade school. Is that correct, Lynn?
That is correct.
There are, within the district, there are no specific staff members whose job is solely dedicated to supervision or monitoring of the Astoria Trace Academy, so. Other than what the staffing has set up above, we don't have any other supports in place. For that, so the next slide. So challenges why families are not choosing our program. Program assessment and adaptation review competing online programs by gathering detail on every and every slide. Lack of awareness, families in this are not actively aware of the Astoria Trace Academy, there's insufficient marketing and outreach. I cited the number as far as the summer. Of parents who were taking their kids to Oregon, I think it was Connections Academy, that when I would call and talk to them, they would say, I didn't know about your online program. So that's an issue. Competent flexibility, other districts programs successfully attract local families by offering greater or more clear defined flexibility and scheduling in the curriculum. An example of that is one program in particular, according to a parent said, the kid has to take reading. And math. And they got to take two or three other courses, but that's up to the family on which ones they have to take. So if that's a true statement, I don't know if they're meeting the requirements of the state to do that. But we could. Look at our program to provide some type of flexibility, I think it'd be more than just math and reading. So. A significant loss of enrollment, it happens to be the same number of kids who. Attend our online school, but there is a population that we know of of 22 students. The reason I'm in our school district currently enrolled in out of district online charter schools and we know who those kids are. And I can tell you that we've either myself or other administrators have made outreach to those parents. And the other two bullet points above is the reasons why they don't come here.
Candidate question.
Yeah.
Good question. So. Do they have to be in our school district to be in Astoria Trace Academy, or do we have students that are not? Like that are like courtesy enrolled in our online program?
They do not have.
Okay, would they have to? Apply for a courtesy enrollment like any other?
If they were within the county, yes. If they're an online school. I think there's a way to do it without them doing a third enrollment. It's different, trying to not confuse charter schools.
Right.
And be trying to figure out what the rules are in my head, but I don't want to do a charter.
Nice.
And but. I can tell you, we have. A group of kids who go to an online charter school that is supported by, excuse me, an online. Program, not a charter school, that's supported by the SCAPU school district, so I got their forms this summer in SCAPU, so I was like. What was going on? I talked to the parents, I think some type of online academy connected with SCAPU. I'm like, I feel like that. So I think, uh, great chance to quickly know, because I had to sign these forms to send them off to SCAPU. So.
What, and what is? Who's? Oregon connections, like. Who is? Funding that?
It's funded like we're funded with the number of students who attend.
But I think is it the district?
They're all connected to a district one way or another, like Evergreen Virtual Academy, which we've done some work with this fall on is supported by the North Bend School. So they're all connected to, uh, Baker Academy is supported by Baker School.
I want to say Oregon Chargers, like Silverton or somewhere around there.
Yes. Which is probably, they probably have more kids in New York and that's cool than the SIO. SIO like the size of that.
Yeah, I feel like. I hear that one a lot. It with kids I work with.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering if it's because it says Oregon in the title, but it's like a. More respected just because of that, I don't know.
I think there's also a problem with their title, we said Astoria Trace Academy, people don't know what that is, but it's called Astoria Online. We, we thought Astoria Trace Academy was a fancy name, but.
I have a question about that too.
Sure.
So. It said in our, in the general information, there's nobody who's dedicated to supervision of it. I know in our district across the river, we, our choice academy is a combination of the alt school and the online school, and there is a principal that for that.
Yeah.
Um, is there somebody who supervises grade school? Like the alternative program?
High school.
So, so Linda.
Yeah.
Okay, but nobody for the online.
Yeah.
But that is our online, correct?
Pardon?
That is our online, Astoria Choice Academy.
It is our online.
We don't have a separate online.
Yeah, but they don't, uh, the high school does not do K through eight. Travis supports them in the way of like making sure they have their, the online part, but not in the recruiting part. And to be honest, Travis doesn't have time to do any more. And one of the things is, and it's going to be hard. Budge wise is that if we want to make this work, I need a dedicated person. Doesn't necessarily have to be a administrator, I just need a body that, and long conversation, Dylan Muck has theirs, it's, it's. We're like six months behind them, they're like this, but they dedicated a person to it, they made outreach to the parents and. The program to make sure that Mentum was it. And they've increased it, they've doubled the size of it for the kids, so. You know, prior to the pandemic, we had this. Kate was the teacher in this program, right? And we hardly had any kids from Astoria, we had.
Yeah, Portland kids.
Yeah.
Who had an arena that was in the Oregon LA, she was clear.
To be considered Astoria Choice Academy, do you have to be taking a certain amount of classes?
Start at high school level?
Yeah, at high school.
No, that is not necessary. We have a number of students, as you noted there, there are about 29. Students that are presently enrolled in self-capacity through ACA. As you noted, probably what 16 of those are full-time. And then the rest are hybrid students, so we have some that are taking one, two, three classes online, the rest on the main campus. So you can have a variety of uses.
So I thought it sounded like coming to the main campus. You are no longer an ACA student. Yes, yes. So that's why I asked.
So today I visited the ACA classroom and I think I want to be clear there. It is ACA classroom. Right? They are still under the umbrella of Astoria High School, not only for reporting purposes, but also we try to prevent them in all of our. Co-curricular, our cultural events, homecoming and stuff. So unlike many districts who create an alternative program with a separate school ID number and reporting number. That is not the case with ours, in a sense, they truly aren't just a classroom of Astoria.
So it's kind of like, it's English.
Extension of a different.
That makes more sense. And so our online is used in both.
Correct.
Areas, but currently my understanding is students enrolled in it have to be physically. Either at the high school or here in the ACA classroom.
All of the two, I believe. There are two students that have, because of distance of travel and in demonstration of academic success are not required to be in person.
And is it true, I'm really put down the spot, is it true in years past when we allowed students at the high school level, there's strictly be, cause that's not the K through eight, K through eight, they don't come in at all? Which I love to change also. That you. Experienced kids who just did not engage when they didn't have to come in?
The percentage of success or the number of credits earned dramatically goes down. Without the structures in place. That holds students accountable for meeting certain benchmarks each week in their progress towards the culmination of the semester.
Is that a demographic of students that are, have been in person and then transferred to online? And it goes down. Versus what I'm thinking is like, we have some established St. Homeschool groups. That would might want to use an online and they're very engaged, they're part of co-ops and things, so they become in kind of a. From a different.
They're really a different population.
You know?
I would say that 90% of our students at one time or another were students of the Astoria School District. Many of which have one, two, three semesters of schooling on the main campus prior to choosing to come. To ACA's campus here at the grade.
So would you say if a, if a child was in an online academy not associated with their district, but they want to accept a classroom down here? You're asking if that's, is that doable?
Well. No, I'm just trying to, maybe, I mean, it's hard to know, like, why? If a student enrolls in online and isn't successful in it without being in person? Is it partially because the student has transferred from being in person at the high school, it wasn't working for them or whatever? And so they thought, I'll go online and without that, that extra support, then. They aren't following through.
I think.
Which would be different in my mind than a, a family that's choosing to homeschool without that scenario, who's very engaged. And wants to utilize an online parent. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. My, my point would that be whether that need instructor provided here on the grade school campus. Or mentoring parents that is present at home during the day when the student is to engage. I'd have found that there needs to be some type of mentoring involved to help students successfully access their education. If left at home. By themselves. Most 15-year-olds do not independently engage in the curriculum at a rate that will earn them the benefits necessary to graduate on time.
Right.
What's up right now during the pandemic?
Yeah. And just another question, you know, going back to how you. Uh, mentioned, you know, some. The flexibility piece where in some other programs, they could access like two classes and flexibility, because homeschooling is. Kind of a different setup, like the parents really, don't they? Designate whether a child has met the benchmarks, I mean, they graduate and things, so them being able to kind of all a cart. Pick classes is, it's just a different scenario, you know, they aren't graduating necessarily from. K through 12, like are the public education, so it's complementing what they're doing, not a. Full meal deal, I guess, I don't know if that makes sense, so is there a way to? Yeah, be able to have some flexibility in our system. To accommodate what they need from it.
The state has put out online guidance, or has put out guidance on online programs. But I had a conversation, to be honest, with it this summer with the department of that around, what's the difference between an online? Academy and a charter school? And as soon as I heard what the requirements for a charter school, I was like, you know, I'm interested in that, there used to be money if they came to charter schools and there isn't anymore. The online academy is more doable, so there's guidance that provides that. And the other part is, is that. One of the conversations we had beginning this meeting is the opportunity for me or others in the board to sit down with our homeschool parents or. Parents who choose an online, other online academies or schools, find out. What do they want in flexibility and then I can see what I can do. So.
Yeah.
Can you go to, I think I have one more slide. Maybe to one. This program offered benefits, it's a robust, uh, what we could. Robust online curriculum access to a full adventum platform for flexible high call instruction. Essential technology provided, provisioned that's here for computer technology to ensure seamless learning at home, we could provide those computers for them. Comprehensive instructional support, dedicate online and in-person support for certified educators to guide learning and address challenges, so. One of the things that I pictured in my mind is that. Um, we have an empty classroom here, that's great, and I've intentionally kept it empty, trying to figure out what the best use of it. And I've had a lot of people make a run in that classroom, cause EST and everybody, but. I would, I would station a person there in that classroom. And set it up somewhat like a, uh. A title or especially like classroom with tables and stuff, so the kids need helpful support, they can come in in person and get that help and support they need there. And not just have to be strictly online, and it's right down the hall from the, the high school part of it, so.
You're talking K eight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bridge engagement opportunities, I know, I, I read them online all the time, there are. Charter schools or online academies who will go out once a month to the Maritime Museum or things like that, we could offer the same type of things for kids enrolled in the academy. And then. We could guarantee connection to our district as well as access to local resources and events that could happen, so. I just want to feel, to engage in them more if we can. Um, the next line is strategies to increase enrollment. Review competing online programs, like getting detailed family feedback, like I mentioned. Strategically adapt that Trace Academy offers to meet the standards as well as meet the parents. Um, we need to, I need to get a dedicated, well, the next two, I need to dedicate the staff member to really work on this program and it's. It's, it can be increased if I have somebody, so. I, I won't talk to anybody more about that in this, at least I don't know what that entails and whether it's certified, classified. So, but those are the last one, they need to market the program better, and I know that, so. Well, that's all I have for the presentation, I'm more than willing to continue the discussion or have questions.
All right, I, I do not, actually, I'm sorry, is, so online, if they take. Say two classes online or three utilized programs online, is it the same as coming into the school? And taking a couple of classes as far as financially for the district, how does that?
So I think what you're referring to, if they're not full-time, we count them as hourly students, I think, I assume that's how it would be, it's the same learning, uh, time.
But a hybrid student that exceeds that half a day, he's going to be counted as a full A M. So if they have three or four classes on the main campus and then transition appear and taking three classes. In the event of, they would be counted as a full A M.
And we, I should state also, we opened our schools up, Kate's got a couple. Not sure if either has any that are coming, I know middle school has always had, I don't know if it's gotten more.
We, we have quite a few and even our children who are enrolled with, um, the online program. Um, almost all of them, not all of them, almost are coming in for music or CTE or. The other thing that we're, we do is, uh, Ms. Rockland, who's the instructor, we include her in our. Staffings, we do the, all those things and her students are invited to all of our engagement activities. And I would say about like to come and participate. Or be on a sports team or, so we've seen that up to that, um, participation. Since, I would say that two, three years ago, it was, the COVID restrictions made it really hard. But after they looked at that and said that they could do more of those group activities, we got a lot more participation.
I would say additionally, just to kind of take me back, our host principal, but. Um, K A, as a student is receiving special education services, we have a deal with the parents that they have to come in on those hours. Because we can't offer the same quality instruction from already, we don't have the status to do that.
Do we have many kids, um, utilizing special education services that are? Like doing homeschool or online or?
We have in the past, I know that we have several things we do right now on the high school level. We might have one. But in the past, we've had several. So, and that has worked out well. So a couple of things was, I'll work to see, what it would take to. Increase staffing on this and work on planning sport. I'll also work with board members on creating those meetings, cause I might need your help getting those people to those meetings. Um, and I could ask them to, I just want to build respect whenever they're comfortable with. Cause I think they were comfortable to talk to board members, so. The other thing I want to touch on is, one of our, also one of our goals is a marketing and branding of the district, and I've done some work on that, and I had Jenna and Tyler listen in on the presentation. The, um. And there was one company, and I could have mentioned a company because, um, they do good work. It's not about that, it's about. To do that is quite a bit of money. To get an outside organization to do that, we're talking anywhere from sixty to a hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, I don't know. Um, if the board wants to continue down that path. I think there's some things we can do internally, but. To be honest, I don't think we could do at the level that they were going to do with that kind of money. But there's some things that we could do, and I can go back and try another firm. People would like, I know there's one that the city uses that I haven't talked to yet. Or I could put a marketing plan together that I think that we could do as a district ourselves, it wouldn't be as comprehensive as what they would do, but it was better than what we're doing now. So. Um, it was pretty extensive what they were doing, but they were going to do. Focus groups and all this, so that we've done a lot of focus groups for our strategic plan, I didn't need that part, I needed social media, I needed. Change the name of that, tell me to change the name to Astoria Trace Academy, to Astoria Online Academy. You know, things like that, so. I don't, to be honest, I don't think we can afford to do it from a financial standpoint this year. And I know that, I think Tyler and Jenna sort of said, said that correctly.
Yeah.
I think we could do better than what we're doing now and I'd like to have a chance to put a plan together and bring it back into work. All right?
Yeah.
Are there anything else on that goal? It's a broad board goal back in the board. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move on to maintenance report.
Um, I think we're having a programming budget.
There you go.
There you go, you just checked in. So we had shared last board meeting, we did a federal program, so this meeting, we brought three other programs back. One is English language learning technology. And then one is maintenance. And, um, and then I just included at the end, the next item, one of the agenda, what Jen said was our sort of, um, our maintenance report, so. The first one is our English language learners. Stephanie, you want to talk about this at all? Can you, can you go to the?
Yeah.
That's it right there.
So, um, one of the areas we get plenty of our English language learners is high level three, which we kind of lumped out of the title. Uh, last time, but it's part of a consortium, so we don't really see. The money in the district, we just get it as part of the consortium, and most of the benefits we see from that are. Nearly training for our consortium community trainers, cause it's required training, they, they'll usually send a member, one of our staff members to the Christmas ball festival conference. Uh, and then they, you know, they provide some general, local community support. Uh, and then they, you know, they provide some general, full community support to people that are consortium. Uh, the majority of our funding for E L D comes from just the general funds. And it looks like S S A, S I A money is in there as well. So four full-time E L D teachers, one in each building and then four separate staff that work at each teacher, at each building. Um, hundred and sixty, uh, hundred and sixty nine students, something like that. We have ninety-three active ones and then seventy of them that are monitored. Uh, so those are the students that are impacted by the E L D. Title III funding, obviously it's better off. I think that's not very reliable in the future, but it's also not a ton.
So. The, the other one on that same call that she just mentioned is a weighted one point five per student for general fund. So for E L L students, we get instead of a one, they get to count as one and they count them as one point five. But if, if, if I'm correct, Stephanie, those are for active?
Active E L D students.
And not for monitored. Can you spend a minute just to talk about the difference?
So active E L D students are ones that are currently being served in E L D classrooms as E L D teachers. Once they pass the E L P, the English language proficiency assessment, then they, they are exited. And Title III requires them to monitor for four years. So they're not receiving active services, but they're being monitored by the E L D teacher. Uh, periodically to check in and make sure they're doing okay. And then they need to be re, you know, go back into the E L D services if they can. Um, if you, they're showing that they're not still not making progress. But yes, the way that I believe is just that to be able to do this.
Do the monitored students have to take the E L P?
They do not.
Doesn't a kid get put into monitored over a certain amount of time if they don't even pass the E L P? Or can a kid stay in there the whole time?
Stay in. They, they're monitored for four years.
Four years.
If they're successfully doing well in school and pass their class and all that after four years, then they're no longer monitored. As you consider, yeah, or E L.
If they're not doing well, then how do they get back in to the?
It's usually a meeting with the teacher and the E L D teacher and the parents and the parent signs, you know, permission for them to go back into that. Once they're back in. And they will have to start taking the E L P again. So, yeah.
And we have one teacher per building. And one classified staff member per building practice. And it says on there that one of our four teachers is paid out of a student investment grant. And three of our four classified are paid out of student investment grant. So those are not general fund issues. So. Other than that, um. It's just regular general fund. Uh, budget spread. Any questions on that?
What is not doing well mean?
All it means like if they're, they're generally classes and they're not, either they're not passing their classes or maybe they're struggling to pass or complete assignments. The teacher might be the E L D teacher and determines, do they think it's language, language based still? Are they still having some language? Issues that are affecting their academics or is maybe something else? Do they think? They would benefit from having more language services? So it's just kind of a discussion of why would not be successful in classes? And determining what would be the best of both.
Okay. So I get looked into because the E L P test itself is pretty hard to pass, correct?
Yeah. And the monitoring is not based on the E L P test. It's just based on how they're doing in class. Once they're monitored, it's really just about how their grades are and how they're performing in class. And they don't actually fail again. And they have made improvements on the E L P. They have um. Um, what's called um. Where they get to keep their proficiency. So, and they've extended that to middle school. So if I'm a seventh grader, I pass one part of the E L P, like the reading part. And then as an eighth grader, I don't have to take that part again because it is a very challenging test and a lot of English speakers would pass it if they were taken. So they've kind of made some adjustments to, to, with that understanding. And even, and even kids that are really close. Like they just missed a bite just like a little bit. Cause there's this thing called veridian proficiency where if the parent agrees, then they can be exited. So I think they're real wanting to reach that, okay, that test, yeah.
But a kid does have to pass a, E L P to get out of.
Monitoring?
Well, to get out of, to get out of these acts, it's too much.
They have to pass the E L P.
Yeah. Cause I was curious and they passed that, like, I don't know if it's so much of a language thing than it is with certain subjects from the outset. And there's that.
How often do kids that are, have graduated out of monitoring go back?
Uh, since I've been in this position in the last three and a half years, one.
One.
Typically, most of the eyes that they're, they're strong enough to stay out.
And I know from just watching and hearing that our E L L teachers are kicking their eye out. All of us, they're sort of their kids, so that, and they're mine. So. All right. Any other question on that? We can go to the uh, technology and there's a couple of explanations for this. One is technology provides uh. Education tools to enhance kids' education. And there's examples there including um personalized learning. Um, different platforms or apps or tools. Um, we have a number of subscriptions to different things. It's been quite a bit of title books on that. And then technology is also used to help administrative tasks, uh, whether it's our, our. Our accounting, um substitutes, um and our evaluation of staff we use online. So it's really two main there. We have one person that is. A smart Kaiser who is dedicated for that. And it's all paid out of the general fund. And um. There's an amount there of three hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred dollars in their budget. Uh, but that's, that includes supplies and materials, not just salaries. So. Um, and that is a general fund, funding based on priorities. The district has each year, so and software.
What is the E S D do for us in terms of technology? I thought they did something.
They do. Um. Thanks. Um, I got. Like our server, like more of the, is it the? Uh, infrastructure, they assist with that part. Um.
If they are there, I mean, and I, I don't know, have we looked into utilizing the E S D for some of those other like subscriptions that would be? Things that others, school districts utilize? They don't. Okay.
Yeah.
So Stephanie, talk about just, just some examples of some subscriptions that we use educationally.
That is, that's paid for through technology.
Yeah, you know. Maybe you don't, that's not your area.
Yeah, I know like I X L math, I think. Well, I hope that comes out of the, I know, I honestly don't.
Well, we pay our share, we pay our share for like front lines. That are, helps with administrative tasks, but because we're in a consortium with Cascade and all the E S D, then we get that at a cheaper price. Probably not giving good examples, but if we had to do it ourselves, that would probably double the amount of money we call it six, six, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Financial system also, uh, we, we get it. We pay for it, but we. And the Northwest Regional E S D are actually C T A. They. They like are over it and then we get chunk of it. So it would, I'm sure it would be much more expensive. Plus they also help with. The um, the backside of everything.
That's the physical technology.
Yeah.
We get our stu- student information system and it's through that Cascade technology. Um. And we do, we all have our tennis dashboard. Information comes out of that now. So the tenants comes out that. Um, just look it up, students and grades, think about that. Isn't um great looking. Um, that part too.
I assume, I assume any tech needed for special ed I E Ps comes from them as well. Yeah.
And that new program that we speak of already, it's anyone called? Classwise, classwise that allows teachers to monitor when the students are online. We have screen to show what all the kids are doing. So they can monitor what they're doing. That's part of that.
Yeah. All that goes through the E S D. Um, we get it like. A lot cheaper, but partly because they're own, but they're big enough. But it would cost us, it'd probably triple that if we run it down with different costs. Any questions on that? I know if you need more information, we can bring more information about that. We said it's close. And then uh, the last one is maintenance. And the primary purpose of maintenance is to create, sustain, and save, healthy, and effective learning environment. We have a responsibility to protect our investments and keep a healthy lifespan as well as just. Maintain and fix things. We have one supervisor, that's Billy. We have two staff members that are strictly dedicated to just maintenance. Um, one also does some work on grounds along with a different grounds person. These are all general fund uh money. Um, and it's based on priorities and we'll talk about that at the next part of it. So the funds in there, general fund is six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. That includes um. Those three stat numbers plus funds for fixing items, buying parts, those types of things. So, and I, I'm. Real proud of the work our maintenance department does. I'm really proud of what our, what our schools look like these days and we think, oh, we. We do let them, big investment over ninety million dollar investment in our facilities. And they're responsible for the whole amount of those. Any questions on that? Go to the next one. It's sort of a carry on to this one.
Yep. One there, maintenance.
Yeah. So I had a couple of conversations with Billy about this, like one of the budget items in our. In our budget is around um projects that need to be done. And so Billy has had this going as an. Uh, ongoing document. And then um, I would say that he's not able to do every project every year because of budget purposes and it just gets reshuffled. Um, Billy, you want to talk on that?
So a lot of our maintenance obviously is reactive. So we put a lot of that in after being competitive. Um, so it goes into reactive, but we do a lot of reactive things throughout the district. Um, a lot of the items that you see up here. There are going to take items that we can't afford. And it's uh, and we can't afford it in one shot. So we kind of try to break it up. Um, some of the stuff like for this year that we're trying to do, like Vastre, we want to repeat this A T and security thing. Make sure it's on the same key system. Um, which is one of the things that they get done in the law and then we kind of carry those things over. Um, and we try to pick them off, you know, either in big chunks if we have money left over. Or we pick them off in small chunks so that we band it until we can no longer band it anymore essentially. Um, but it goes all the way down to like thirty, thirty-seven or thirty, thirty-eight, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-eight or something like that. But um, there, if you have any questions about that stuff, it's, I mean, the, the crummy thing about it is prices now, ten years from now are going to be. Twenty-five percent more than what they are. Um, and a lot of the things that are on there, we're not. Qualifying, we're having the knowledge enough to do. And that's where it boils down to. Um, the keying system is a good one. We do all the work. We just have to buy the parts. Uh, re-roofing, if I want a warranty, I pay somebody to do it. If I want to do it myself, I can do it, but it's not warranty type deal. Um, we have.
I was telling Billy, like the third one down, replace carpet with some cart. Like that carpet has twenty-three, twenty-four years old. It's a good color. And it's been shown as later now, but. It's lasted really long. And I remember back then they were telling me all about great it was the architecture stuff and they were right. So. But I want to bring this to show what maintenance looks at this year.
How did you make this list?
So anything that we didn't get the law is a good one. Um, for example, the roofs of the high school. There's two roofs in the district that didn't get done. Cafeteria roof in high school and uh main ditch hips um didn't get done. And they're starting to show somewhere and they're getting a little bit of leaks. Um, some of it is sitting down with the building administrators. I sit down with them weekly and they bring up concerns. We go look at it. If it's end of life type stuff, it's end of life type stuff. Um, some of it is, you know. Nice to have things. For example, paving C M H field would be great to do. Um. You know, it would save us a lot of time for graduation prep. It would be a lot better when people's vehicles are out there. It would be cleaner. Um, same thing with transportation. It would prolong life or it would allow the buses to have an extended life because they're not driving on proper roads. It's more just like. Looking around the district, seeing what needs to get done and figuring out where all those pieces will fit. Thank you. And then you put the highest priority at the top, obviously safety and security is always going to be top priority um the district. And then, you know. Making sure the building's envelope is good and they're.
All right. We'll move forward with integrated guidance. So this is our annual report for integrating guidance. So next slide. Uh, basically it's an annual report required by O B E. It consists of three narrative questions that I'll go over. Um, throughout the year, the grant are required to uh report on expenditures. You typically have reflection narrative questions that we report on. And we have progress markers that we report on. That informs the annual report that I'm giving you now. Um, next slide. I shared this last time, but this is the fifteen progress markers that we, that we provide a reflection on every quarter. Um. Uh, the next few slides all kind of, well, there's, there's a rubric that we, that we uh grade ourselves on. It's either there's no observable change. Which doesn't mean that we're not doing it. It just means we didn't have any significant change over the quarter. Um, whether we saw low change, we didn't change, high change, or if we feel like we haven't already found a place. There's a link there if you're really curious about like more information on the progress markers. Um, next slide. The first few are progress markers that they expected to see early signs of progress in. Um, like new engagement, equity tools, data teams. We've made really good progress on these. Um. These, which is, which it should be because they were the ones we should show early signs of progress on. Um, the next slide on ones that. Kind of expected might take a little bit longer to see some significant change, two-way communication, give me the resources, stewardship, see a voice. Action research, which is just kind of using all of that that students need. Uh, our literacy plan. Ninth grade course, getting along. These are things that we're, we continue to make progress on, but it takes more time to fully, to help them to find a place. Uh, and then the next one are the progress mon- progress markers that really take significant time to make change with. So strengthening our partnerships in the community, additional stewardship, um balanced use of our assessment systems. Addressing systemic barriers, things like that. These are things that. Is going to take a lot of ongoing work to get to finding a place. So the next one. Is our, these are outcomes and strategies specific to our integrated guidance plan with the districts. And we have three kind of general outcome areas. So our first one is support for social emotional learning and then a host of all students. And then some of our strategies that we use are integrated guidance funds for um our counseling services. We have our um bridge, summer school bridge program, bridging from middle school to high school. Um, full day orientation for our ninth graders as they're coming in. Our second outcome as part of our plan is access to culturally responsive instructional practice and curriculum. And our strategies that we use the grant funds for is uh personal part E L D staffing. Uh, funding for some of our instructional coaches, on track coaches, summer school. Uh, we use it for some of our general credit quarters. And then some of ours seem to be easier natural research centers of study. And then our final outcome is targeted support for faithful students and families. And then some of that funds goes towards our by the whole family liaisons, which this year is just standing on. And then some of our staffing around smaller class sizes, special education staff support, instructional coach at Aster. That are giving that targeted support for our students. So I mentioned these just because part of the questions that an artist asked for are in relation to these outcomes. So I wanted to share those. With you to start with. And so the next slide are the three narratives that we have to report to. Uh, you and then report to O B E. The first one is asking. As you review your progress markers and your reflections. Um, how do you see your progress contributing to the outcomes and strategies that I just shared with you? And your longitudinal performance progress, which we have set around like third grade reading, track, recreation. Just got that these one outcome areas see progress. So I'm not going to read this whole thing because you can read it, but I just kind of highlighted some things in different colors. So our first outcome is around uh the. Multi-tier system of support for social, emotional and mental health. And the highlighted in blue are some of the things that we've done. We've expanded our counseling staff. We have partnered with education northwest. We have partnered with Education Northwest to provide some training on communities of practice and equity. And we have our building equity teams, um, that are working on providing some of those supports. We also have a district wellness committee that's helping to support our staff with their wellness. Um, and then we have engagement coaches and family liaisons who are working with families in regards to like attendance. Uh, so those are some of the ways the district has worked to build social, emotional, and mental health support. The green ones refer to our second outcome on culturally responsive instruction. And some of the, uh, would reflect on that. We see that we have our new evidence-based literacy curriculum at the elementary level. And then we have, uh, coaching and professional learning cycles. We've partnered with Northwest Regional E S D's Early Literacy Team. And then Oregon Art Response Intervention Team, um, at the E S D. And they have really provided this ongoing cycle of professional learning around our literacy at the elementary level. Uh, we, and they also help us review and update our data teams and our data review process. So we've gotten better at evaluating the progress our kids are making and then respond to that through interventions. Um, so that's, we've really improved on that. We've also worked on, uh, the secondary level, really connecting constructive meeting training. We've gotten almost up to eighty percent of our staff trained on constructive meeting. And then providing that some support with our talk show coaches and then some learning in the office that we did last year that we shared with you. And then we've really seen a lot of growth at the high school with our High School Success Forumator and the High School Success Program. We've seen a whole lot of really good growth in our, like, experience track. And then the orange one at the bottom there is our final outcome, which is, uh, targeted support for our families. So our family liaisons have done a great job of supporting our vulnerable families. Um, our engagement coaches are there to support with our attendance initiative. Our equity work through our building equity committees. And then our expanded ELD and special education staff really helps provide more targeted support to our students. And then the one outcome that we've really seen progress in is for the early literacy initiative. We just really focus a lot of energy and look on that and we're starting to see some good ones. Any questions on that first narrative? And so the second one is when you have, where have you experienced barriers, challenges, or any type of extra progress towards any of our outcomes and strategies? And then this is why, where we see the challenges or barriers in orientation. So we do still see kind of a high need for student supports around behavior and mental health, as well as you are aware, of high levels of complex access. There's some, we're still working with that. And we do have a really high percentage of students receiving special education. I mean, it exceeds the state's eleven percent cap, if you guys are aware of that. So just having the staff to support the students and give that targeted support is can be a challenge. We also are seeing a large influx of newcomer students who aren't fluent in English. Uh, we don't really have the funding or the resources to provide like a newcomer academy, um, or dual language classes that would help those students be more successful, uh, in their classes, especially at like the secondary level. So there are some barriers there. And then, um, we did lose some, uh, funding support for our second part of literacy specialist a couple of years ago. We do have, thanks to our new grant, we do have, uh, uh, an interventionist at the middle school now. But we don't necessarily have the support that we had before to support that target, support for secondary students in literacy. So those are just some of the, the challenges that we've seen. And then the last slide is, uh, this is around our long, our longitudinal performance goal targets. And we're supposed to, uh, kind of look at that and share reflection on how we've made progress. And then discuss how the activities that we're doing are supporting those targets. I, when I made this report, I only had the data from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So I don't have like our most recent Oregon State Assessment Data. So, uh, that's what this is based on. But some of the things that I saw that we've done really well on it is the yellow one, which is our four-year graduation rate. And, um, what it says there in yellow is the difference between the baseline and gap closing was about nine point five percent. So with the longitudinal goals, we set a baseline where we want like all of the students of the district to be. And then we have a gap closing goal of our focus groups, our student focus groups. So if the baseline's here and our focus groups are here, we're trying to like close the gap. And so we have to set a goal that closes the gap. So we're eventually better, this, this is the goal for everybody. And so we really did see a really nice closing of the gap with our four-year graduation rate of nine point five percent. So yeah, so that's good. Um, we also saw a positive difference of three point nine percent in gap closing with our third grade meeting in twenty-three, twenty-four. Even though our, our overall proficiency went down, we closed the gap. So it's kind of yay and ah, at the same time. Uh, and then, um, the purple one at the bottom, and this again is twenty-three, twenty-fourty, and we did see an increase of eight percent for all students and an increase of seven and a half percent for vocal student groups in, um, attendance. So we were starting to see some growth in attendance this year as well. So we are looking at our longitudinal goal goals and closing the gap. And that's it. So I don't think you have any other questions?
All right, we'll move on to follow-up user and personal electronic devices.
Yeah, so this policy is on the, I mean, regular agenda tonight for adoption, as you remember. But the executive order from the government has to be adopted by, I'm probably thirty-first. I just thought we'd have some time at the end. If board members have any questions about the policy, because it has been brought back to them for a second week.
Does it have the sports field trips and stuff? Uh, I saw, I didn't see it for there. Cause like when we're at, when we had that, uh, training here, we did talk about, it was up in the district for sporting events and field trips. I think that should probably be specified in here.
Yeah.
It says down here at the bottom, it says.
Yeah, we're in the footnotes.
Yeah, it has, uh, so, something on there, but it's, you know, it's not specifically talking about, I mean, we're going to handle them.
And this would be after school hours, right?
Correct. Well, I mean, some of them, some school, actually, guys who would be leaving during school hours.
Yeah, but like the kids coming back, I think we did this the same night we had that, on the speed train, we had a bus delay to Tillmack and I think the kids were told to text their.
I can tell you how we do it currently.
Yeah, I think the kids were told there, were told to text their parents, because they got the seaside.
So our, our coaches collect the phones. And it goes to a phone. And when we asked, depending on how, which way we're going, we had that, or we were coming across, and then it gets Costco, the phones get taxed out. We have had zero issues with, uh, inappropriate behavior at away gates. Where previously there were some situations where photos were taken that shouldn't have been, those kinds of things. So right now, um, that's how we're navigating this sport. Field trips, they are not allowed to go, with the exception of, and this is a very costly procedure because we don't help kids on their eighth grade celebration at the end of the year. We let them pay their phones and maybe do all sorts of unphoned. But otherwise, we don't know.
Now we'll see how many people listen to the recording.
I'd be more, more interested, I guess, with, with the high school. I mean, these guys are used to having their phones and then being in school all day and then being on a bus for, uh, four hours till, you know, two hours there and two hours back, um, not being able to check their phones or.
My experience is they've kind of gotten used to. A lot of the coaches have out turned their phones out on the, or on the the bus trip to sporting events. Kind of seems like there's several.
There is an interesting challenge there as, I'm speaking as a father here and at the same time as building administrator, who has a job that got her in her junior year, which is a great challenge in academic gear. Gets on the bus, it wants to do homework in route. And, uh, the C P M curriculum or A P, all of those things are Google classrooms, which poses an interesting conundrum.
I just couldn't imagine, you know, around the, uh, game, or around a bus to a football, baseball game, not being able to listen to music or, you know.
I agree, or, I would provide some insight as a student.
So, uh, for our hockey basketball program, uh, we get our phones taken, as soon as we get on the bus, uh, no matter where we're going. But, uh, once the game is over, all those phones are handed out right away, right after the game. Um, I'm not sure of other programs that do the same. Football, we don't get our phones taken, track, don't get our phones taken, but that's what I'm aware of.
What do you think students would think of that?
I don't think they'd be very happy about it, but I think it's like somewhere to the phone back really. At least for basketball, it was like a pain for like a week and a half maybe, but then people got used to it and they put their phone in the bag to keep it on and like have headphones or someone will bring a speaker. I think there's ways around it, but it's definitely. Yeah, you can certainly want to.
Do you think there's, like, actually students who, do you try to do their homework?
Um, I don't know. For, for me, what I've been around now, but it's also a group of guys playing football. It's probably a different.
She's her mother's daughter.
They have like a study section on the bus.
I mean, it is not fair. I mean, they have a limit in time when they're exploring something. It's hard to be both and keep up with them, especially if you're doing eight classes and stuff.
I think it's different too, like, I mean, sports too, like, if you're going to, like, track, there's a chance that you could be at a track meet for like eight hours. Yeah, or swim meet, yeah, like all day. I don't know.
I'd like, I'd like to see.
Like one school hour charter.
I, I think if they're going on a bus to a sporting event, I, I would like to see them have access to it. I, I've never seen phones with it. It seems like we are, and I'm just sure that's right. And coming home from the game, like texting grandma and grandpa how things went. Just, just like.
From what I've heard from, you know, the coaches that do what Ben was just saying, it kind of sounds like they want that team camaraderie and they want their focus on the game and or what, you know, the performance and not distracted.
Especially before the.
So just case I put it in a policy, yeah, because then they would have to follow. Yeah.
So the way the policy reads now, they're not allowed to?
Uh, we just don't, we just don't specify it.
Well, they're not allowed to during school hours according to the policy, but they can have it on buses, according to the policy, is what I read.
But the first paragraph.
Students are not on school.
If students are under the supervision, that like said, number one, other than a school bus driver. Well, they're not allowed to have that on the buses now.
Yeah.
So. They aren't supposed to have it on the buses. But I will give you an example. Yesterday, we had two high schoolers not get off with their stops because they drivers sent their name. They were so, showed them to their phone that they didn't get off with their stop. Hey, you missed my stop. No, I stopped there. The other kids got off. And it was the high school. Well, I do agree that sports thing, I think, is for especially after the game, just for like ETAs, you know, like getting home, parents to be enough, you know. I mean, I guess I'm just old, because when I went to school, there was no phone. Oh, I do have a cell phone going to school games. I just enjoy the bus ride. But on the way back, it is nice to like be able to be like, hey, let me be home in like thirty minutes. So that, is that past school hours or the time you're coming home? So it shouldn't even count, right?
How was the access to, um, parents', uh, parent square?
Like, uh, I don't like my parents where, when we get that update for like soccer, it'd be like ETA twenty minutes and then the parents were, they wouldn't come through until like they're already there the next day. And so then you never really knew.
And obviously, I got text, thanks, very much.
Day is, I'd be like, where are they? Which is a great way to communicate if it worked appropriately, but.
Can we sleeve enough to the coaches?
Yeah.
Can you put that in there?
Would you say that, though, does the current policy fit that? I'm just trying to understand.
I mean, I feel like the policy is pretty clear that it's during school hours they can. So like on the way somewhere, if it's during school day, then you know. Um, but the way home, maybe under the strength of discretion.
But it says, and are not under the supervision of school personnel. So when they're on going to a game, they're under supervision of school personnel. Yeah.
But that, or, or, the training, they did, they, month pays. They did specifically say that the district could decide the policy for field trips and sporting events.
Yep, my straight news.
I think just maybe leaving it up to the, uh, head coach of the program to make that determination.
Do you want that added to the policy?
I mean, I would probably like to see something added to that, but I want to speak for everybody. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with not. I just want to make sure that's, that's kind of clear that they do have the option to, uh, that they can use phones on. I don't really care about field trips, but the, uh, um, the sports trips is, this can be long.
The after-school hour.
Yeah.
Trips.
Yeah, and you could put on there, like, um, if you wanted to change it, you could put under advisors, coaches, or you can just put whoever supervises in a trip because of the, it's a climate, it's everything. Because you have a class with a bookstore in Portland and I go home till ten o'clock.
Yeah.
I'm starting to just a little bit understand that last sentence on the first paragraph of that, if that. I don't know, it makes me like a very well-written statement.
The parentheses, other than a school bus driver.
Yeah. And I'm just trying to figure out like what kind of said, does that fit under that first sentence, or do we need to? I'm okay with changing it, but do we have to change it or does it fit? I don't like the sense to start.
Yeah, as long as everybody knows.
I mean, down at the bottom, under the number one, uh, it says in there, um, the district could include language regarding field trips here. Do you see that?
Yeah, yeah. You want to just put something there that says that the discretion of after-school hours and the discretion of.
Sense.
I, uh, supervise.
Yeah.
Well, um, I'll read the. I'll do this. I'll, I'll put a statement there, although I'll read it. That's the regular board being that statement so that you can agree with it or not. I also, I know we're short on time, but Mr. Jackson and I had a conversation today. And, um, about this policy, and he would like to talk to the boardroom about this policy. So why doesn't he talk it all right?
I believe there's a reality that I just want to deal with with. In the sense that the Oregon Department of Education, the American degree actually agrees with this. They just don't have it in policy in the sense that the safety and security of our students is a priority to where I have staff. On a typical lunch grade, myself, Mr. Madison, and five instructional assistants are moving throughout campus to ensure the safety and security of our students. I do not have adequate staff to ensure that every student on campus doesn't have their phone out very much. We will strive to monitor that. But the strength enforcement of the cell phone executive order will certainly be applied in academic settings bell to bell and will be encouraged as much as we can in non-instructional time periods. Otherwise, that could become a very difficult opposition to differently, at the high school level. It's, we don't have it all in one location as they do at the middle school. I just want to deal with that. In a sense, the analogy I use with superintendent offices, there's a difference between speeding on an open freeway, speeding in the school zone, speeding in construction zone. And the school zone, construction zone concept is like, that's our classroom setting that we will strictly continue to adhere to it. Cell phones out, we collect that phone. If they have it out in a non-structured environment. If they have it out in a non-structured environment, we will ask them to secure it. But unless it becomes individual, we're almost likely not to secure and take the phone from the student. Unless I'm instructed otherwise. But that's the reality of seven individuals in a hundred and forty-four calories per view is a total problem.
Yeah. Yes. Well, what I shared with Mr. Jackson, I don't, I don't want a superintendent, I don't want him or the other people supervising to be holding police, I don't, they're not going to build good relationship with kids if they're just going around policing phones. If they see a phone out, tell a kid put it away or do whatever you need to do, but don't go looking like, you know, following kids.
Did my best.
Sure.
Okay, it's currently six fifteen-five, we're adjourned this meeting and come back at seven o'clock for our regular boardroom.